Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting to order for the City of Daly City regular meeting. Today is Monday, January 22nd. Thank you all for joining us. For those who are wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit this to the staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. Gangona.
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
So this evening, welcome, everyone, community members. We are proclaiming February as Black History Month in Daly City. And today, we have the honor of having Chris Allen from the Lincoln Park Community Center Advisory Board over here. So please join us. And I'd like to ask my colleague on the council to join me as we go to the front.
Be a pleasure.
Okay. Thank you for, I got my glasses. Ms. Allen. We, on the council, are honored to present this proclamation to you in honor of Black History Month. We have a few whereas here on the proclamation, I'm going to read a couple. Whereas, February is officially celebrated as Black History Month to honor the contributions and achievements of African Americans in general and their part in the development of the United States in particular. And whereas, this year, 2018, we paused to focus on the role, the roles of African Americans in every American war, from the Revolutionary War to the present, as times of war inevitably provide the framework for many stories related to African American soldiers, sailors, veterans, civilians, from heroic action in combat to the Great Migration from the South. And whereas African Americans residing in Daly City have contribute to the betterment of our community by their teaching and skills through their volunteerism and by their civic pride and involvement. Now therefore, on behalf of the Honorable Mayor Justlyn Manalo and the rest of my colleagues here on the City Council, we do hereby proclaim February 18th Black History Month in Daly City, California, and sign today therefore.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Paye, you should be in there. Come on, Jim. We see you all the time.
One, two, three.
Okay, Ms. Allen, if you wish to say a few words, you're more than welcome. I have speaking to Mike, so the people are going to hear you.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council, staff, and audience. On behalf of my family, residents of Daly City, and all the African Americans that live, work, or volunteer in this city of Daly City, it's an honor for me to accept this proclamation. I've lived in Daly City for 48 years. I am currently on the Advisory Board at Lincoln Community Center, and I also volunteer for the Second Harvest Program. February being Black History Month, I would like to extend the invitation to all of you and the listening audience as well to join us on February 5th at Saramati Library from 5:00 PM to 7:45 PM for our cultural celebration, which will be held at the Saramati Library. There will be live entertainment, door prizes, and a screening of the fantastic movie Red Tails.
Yeah.
The time is from 5:00 to 7:45 PM. So please come out and join us. By the way, there will be refreshments served and door prizes after the movie. So come out and join us, please. And thank you again for this wonderful proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen, would you kindly come back up, please, for a second? You know, I have to commend, thank you, Madam Mayor, I have to commend you what you just said, and I'm looking for your notes, and you probably had it all up here, and that gets kind of tough to do when you have to speak in front of everyone. So I wanted to thank you for that. But at the same time, I wanted the audience to also recognize Ms. Leslie Paye. Ms. Paye, would you come on up for a second? Ms. Leslie Paye has done a lot for Daly City, Lincoln Center, and continues to do so much for the citizens of Daly City, and I consider you as one of our unsung heroes as well. So ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Leslie Paye.
I do have information on the 26th Annual Black History Month Celebration that will be going on on the bench.
Please, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We look forward to joining you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
We have another proclamation for Yoga for Health, Health for Humanity. And so may we please have Vet Khatagari, Acharya, and Leela Krishnan. So this proclamation is for Yoga for Health and Health for Humanity, January 13 to 28. The Hindu Swamya Nisaka San is a voluntary nonprofit social and cultural organization that aims to preserve and promote the Hindu culture and values such as a universal brotherhood and selfless service, contribute to the overall physical, intellectual, and spiritual development of local communities. And so to mark this occasion, they're doing Yoga for Health for Humanity in awareness to, intent to create awareness about yoga and its advantages in achieving a healthy body, mind, spirit. And so they invite you to the event, to all the yoga centers, students, and individuals to learn and participate in Health for Humanity Yogathan. So now therefore, I, Justlyn Manalo, Mayor, and the members of the City Council of City of Daly City do hereby proclaim January 13 to 28 as Yoga for Health and Health for Humanity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you would like to say any words, please?
At the outset, I should, I would like to thank you, Honorable Mayor, and all this all who are in the staff. It gives an immense pleasure to receive this from you, and we are from the non-aliened organization. Our intention, our team is to, intention is to build the greater America with, and including the character building with the organization. And as we mentioned, Yogathan is the thing which we are doing for next, we are already done with one week, one more week is there. We are conducting Surya Namaskar Yajna. It's like for two weeks, the continuous, we are doing the yoga and the yoga programs. We are conducting the schools, and this particular event is happening in almost 40 states or the United States of America. And thanks for all your, this proclamation. It gives us a lot of moral boost and motivation to us, and we would like to conduct more and more activities like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. If people were interested in contacting you, how would they do that? You're talking to a live, you know, TV audience here.
All right.
There may be some yoga enthusiasts out there who would love to connect up with you.
All right, we can give the details.
So on the, the HSS has a website called hssus.org. On that, there is information about the local centers that are conducting the SNY or the Surya Namaskar Yajna. And locally here in Daly City, well, Chile, in San Francisco, next Sunday, we are planning to conduct a two-hour instructional workshop for anybody who is interested at Mission Bay. So there is also information about that. So it's a neighboring city, and we'd like to welcome anybody and everybody who is interested in that. And there'll be a certified instructor, certified by the HSS, who'll be conducting the yoga for the two hours.
Thank you very much.
It's free of cost, it's a volunteer organization.
And the main motto is to know about yoga. It's one of the important things which helps us physically as well as mentally.
We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the approval of minutes for the regular meetings of December 11, 2017, and January 8, 2018. Do I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the following?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So I have a motion to, well, item number six, public hearings, the extension of urgency ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of all commercial cannabis land uses, business operations, and all commercial cannabis cultivation. And at this time, Ms. Silverman, can you provide us with some context?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is before you this evening as an extension of the urgency ordinance for a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of commercial cannabis. As you are aware, the council did have a study session on November 11, 2017 in regards to analyzing and hopefully receiving some information on current, the current status of Prop 64 in Daly City. As a result of that, the staff had directed, the City Council directed staff to establish a temporary moratorium so the City Council can further analyze and study and have further community input on potential regulations on the implementation of Prop 64. As a result of that, I did go before the City Council on a temporary moratorium on December 11, 2017. The government code allows for a 45-day initial moratorium, and at this point, we are still in the process of gaining information. Staff has met, and City Manager has met with our consultant, and we are in the process of establishing community, future study sessions, and also presentations before the council and potential ordinances for you to review. At this time, I would suggest an extension of the moratorium to six months, and that would give us an additional six months to go before the City Council, as well as the moratorium would end potentially in July 25th. If at that time, we need additional time, we can request the council for additional time. But that would give us additional time to consider if one of the options was to consider a ballot, that would give us sufficient time to go before the council. So at this time, we do need to have a four-fifths vote for the extension of the existing moratorium. Staff is here to answer any questions at the City Council.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the floor? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
So the timeline is that, this puts us out to July 25th, but what do you anticipate the next dates for this to come before the council again for some kind of decision?
So the council and the City Manager did meet with our consultant, and they're in the process currently of putting together a timeline. I would like to anticipate by at least the last meeting, the second meeting in February, that we have an initial study session so that we can set up a community input. Ideally, I would like to have a draft ordinance, if anything, by first reading by March. So by March, we should have a pretty good idea where we are, at least direction from the City Council, and if we need to do additional community input. I would defer to City Manager if there's any additional input aside from what we had met on.
So I actually have had conversations with our consultant, and we anticipate that the community meetings that will follow up to our first study session will probably take about three to four weeks to complete and for them to then do the analysis of input that they receive and to prepare a present that they receive and to prepare a presentation to then come back to the council and provide the council with the results of the community input process, to give you a sense of what the community sentiment is about proceeding one way or another with an ordinance that would allow for retail cannabis sales and/or if there is strong sentiment in opposition to that. And then at that time, in that subsequent study session, the council would then give us direction about how you might want to proceed. There are going to be a number of issues, aside from just the, the public input about whether they, the community favors it or not, about the scope of the sales that you would, you know, you may or may not want to see in the city, how, if at all, you want to regulate it, if you want to tax it. So there are a number of different issues. So while we may have a draft ordinance available, we really won't know until you make decisions around all of those different critical points as to what you would want included in an ordinance or in a series of ordinances that we may have to have approved by you. But we'll put as much material together as possible in order for you to assess the direction you want to give to us. So I would hope that that would occur in March, and then by April, we would be coming back to you for some final decision-making and direction. Because as I mentioned to you before, if the council is going to proceed with any kind of, of tax measure, increase in business license, whatever regulatory tax measure that you want to include, we would need to proceed with, you know, with a ballot measure for that moving forward. And in order to do that, we want to have sufficient time for you to review it and to get it on the ballot within the timeline that actually starts in July and ends in August to finalize something on, on the ballot. So you'd want to have as much of that work already completed, you know, by May, so that the materials could be prepared in the, you know, between then and July.
I have another question for the, maybe it's for the city attorney, but I know that the Attorney General has made a statement that he's leaving it up to the U.S. Attorney for this particular jurisdictions, the discretion to enforce, or how aggressive they're going to go after some of these dispensaries, if you will. What have you heard of the, our U.S. Attorney for this district's position on that and whether or not that has had any kind of a chilling effect on, on moving forward with this?
Unfortunately, I probably know as much as you, Vice Mayor, there hasn't been a whole lot of talk about how aggressive the enforcements are going to be, you know, on the federal, you're speaking about the federal level. So I don't have a whole lot of information aside from what you probably know as well, that I don't have that. I do want to add, you know, so the government code allows for the moratorium, the maximum on a moratorium is 24 months. So I did recommend six months and, you know, just to kind of have a leash on it essentially, and I'd have to come back to you if you want to have an additional extension. But if, if the council's pleasure would like to have a 12-month moratorium to give you more time, we can do that as well, if you want to, because it does sound like if we did have information before the council, we're looking at March, possibly May, possibly a ballot measure, and if it does go to a ballot, then we're looking at a November election, so you more than likely will need that 12 months. In the event you do get something sooner, we can always lift a moratorium. I'm just putting it out there because we do have a maximum of 24 months on a moratorium. But I recommend it six months, but if the council's pleasure would like 12 months, we can also do that.
Bless you.
And the other question I had is, I don't remember, did we budget for this moving forward with the election? Did we budget that?
For, I'm sorry.
For putting this on the ballot?
For putting this item on the ballot? No, we have not budgeted for it. We didn't anticipate that at the time that the budget was approved. We, we do have funds for an election already budgeted, and so there would be some additional costs to add, to add the ballot language and that kind of thing, but we would just rely on general funds for that.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Oh, go ahead, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
What's the alternative? What happens if it does not pass today and a moratorium is not passed today?
Then potentially, given where the state is right now, we don't have any regulations in place as it pertains to commercial cannabis, and potentially the state can issue permits to have businesses within our city.
What would the process be? They would go to a state regulatory agency, make an application, have it go through that application process, and they'd be able to do business without any oversight by our city?
If there are no current regulations, that's correct. A permit can be issued.
And they could have their establishment anyplace.
That's the idea. I mean, I'm sure that we can look at that, but we don't have regulations in place.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam City Attorney. I've kind of stated this before in the past. It's inevitable, it's coming. The voters approved it, however, it's still a violation of federal statutes, and I'm concerned about that. And I know that the state is looking in the area of armored transport for cash funds and what financial institutions will actually accept the cash, or else they could be subject to asset forfeiture. I'm also concerned about the proper use permit, as one of my colleagues made mention earlier, if they go to the state and in absence of an ordinance, I think we need to get moving at least. I've heard 500 feet, but I would like to see an ordinance considered doubling that to 1,000 feet away from any church, playground, bank, financial institution, and, you know, at least get an ordinance going so that if we do have to allow this to come to our city, there's other restrictions as per our ordinance that they would have to comply with. So it's just a comment and a thought.
And this is part of the process that will be going before you, for the council to consider those type of regulations, and the moratorium would allow us to at least have that leeway.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments and questions. At this point, do we open the hearings to the public? Are there any cards? Seeing none.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance by roll call, or by the ordinance, the extension of urgency ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of all commercial cannabis land uses, business operations, and all commercial cannabis cultivation.
Move to adopt.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, communications, the implementation of zoning ordinance number 1412, front yard paving, results of the task force meeting. And today we have Mr. Van Look-Husen.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a continued discussion, so to speak, from the city council's September 11 study session, where the council directed staff to form a task force to further study front yard paving regulations, more specifically, the design of front yard paving. And I'll go through the task force that was formed, some of the background in these slides. So just to give an overview of the process, beginning in March of 2013, the city adopted the city's general plan, which directed the staff to develop front yard paving regulations. From that point, council committee was formed to discuss various general plan implementation topics, and that culminated in a January 2017 adoption of various amendments to the zoning ordinance that implemented the general plan, including front yard paving regulations. In July, the staff came to the council to obtain further direction on five specific policy topic areas related to front yard paving. It was at that time that the city council received testimony from the public who was concerned about the impacts of front yard paving on neighborhoods, and the city council decided to have a study session, at which time additional public comment was received from the city council. City council at that time directed staff to form a task force to discuss further the topic of front yard paving design, specifically what would be acceptable in Daly City's neighborhoods. And we did that on, on November 28, the city council task force meeting was held. To go over the outstanding issues that are before the council tonight, again, going back to July, there were five initial topics, two have been taken care of. We still need to establish whether there will be a permit required for front yard paving. We are recommending that one be required, and that'd be $165. There needs to be a decision finalized on what would be the remodeling trigger for front yard compliance, and we are recommending, based on some input from the task force, that that be $100,000. We can explain exactly what that means if the council needs that. And the last thing is the, and this is what the task force was specifically charged with, was the policy that requires existing driveway of a home be replaced at the same time that additional front yard paving was installed. And there were some design options that we went over with the task force, and we will go through those. The task force was comprised of a variety of residents. We compiled a list of residents and actually non-residents that represented, for example, the apartment association, various neighborhood groups within Daly City who would be impacted by front yard paving regulations. The County Association of Realtors was represented, so there was a variety of interested parties, and those are included in the staff report on the screen. The group at the task force meeting was presented with, presentation's very similar to the ones that we've delivered to you. We presented specifically to the group front yard paving design options, and there were four of those. And they were that the, the first was that the regulations be maintained in their current format, where only the new paving would be required to be decorative, integral colored concrete, pavers, or some combination thereof. The second was a concept that was developed this past summer, and we had explored where the existing paving, the existing driveway would be removed, and the entire new driveway, the existing driveway and the new driveway would be replaced with decorative pavers or colored concrete. And the thought here was that the aesthetic of the neighborhood would be maintained better if there wasn't the old concrete and the new concrete next to it. So this was the second item the task force considered, or possibility, rather. There was a third option where not only would the existing driveway be removed and replaced with the same material that the new driveway, the new additional driveway was to have, but that the city would come up with pre-selected color palettes, if you will. And in this way, the thought was that if there would be design uniformity within neighborhoods because the, the variety of material and color would be reduced, and it would look like original construction, so to speak. So this was another concept that we developed. The fourth possibility that the, that the task force considered was that the existing concrete be removed and replaced together with the new paving, and that it be environmentally friendly, i.e. permeable paver, something that allowed groundwater to percolate into the ground. And this was the, you know, the environmentally conscientious sort of option, but admittedly the most expensive. So to allow the task force members to select, they were essentially, gave them a options sheet, if you will. The four options that I just reviewed were presented in a graphic format. The task force members were given the choice to implement each on either 25-foot wide lots, 33-foot wide lots, or both. And we hoped that this would simplify the selection choice by the task force members. We can go through some of the graphics. These are just those same graphics up close, if the council should desire to do that, but minimal design consistency where the existing driveway is retained, the new driveway, the new driveway or concreted area has its own design. This is sort of an example of, on the left of, on the right is the entire driveway's been replaced with the new concrete. This is an example of, the, you know, the new driveway has a different color, in this case, the, the design requirements haven't been implemented in this.
But that's without the three cars that are going to be there.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So we provided graphics to sort of illustrate this. This is the design consistency within each lot. The whole driveway's replaced with a single color or paver type. This is how that's been implemented in a Westlake lot. Some pictures, providing some examples.
And so those are the ones that are required prior to this, so they could just take out that little planted area and they'd be good to go.
They could, yeah, if, that's, that's true. There was a recommendation from one of the task force members that we allow the exposed aggregate, and that's actually shown on the left side of the screen. We do require that 25% of the front yard be retained in landscaping, of course.
And, and, and it requires that it be open to the ground. You can't just set pots there.
That's correct. It has to be open, yes. And we'll go over some of the specific recommendation the task force members had. They, they had additional input, aside from just deciding which of these, design consistency between lots. This just shows that each lot would have a pre-selected color or pattern to maintain the most sort of design consistency between lots within a subdivision. And this is the environmentally, environmentally preferable alternative, grasscrete pavers. Pictures of that. So in addition to making a choice about which of the four options was preferable, which the task force members decided was option one, which was to retain the existing regulations, and that is to be a specific, that the city would not require that the existing driveway be removed when the new driveway, additional driveway area is poured. So the residents would be allowed to keep the existing driveway material. And that was the unanimous choice.
A unanimous choice.
Yes.
There's some pretty divergent views on that group. It's amazing that they came to that. That's good.
They did, so. They did offer some comments, though, in addition to making their choice on the design. Those comments range from just keeping the regulations simple. I mentioned the expansion of the allowing aggregate. That was one thing that the code currently doesn't really allow, but it's something that we could allow. That's exposed rock, essentially, within concrete. It's most prevalent in the St. Francis Heights neighborhood, and the recommendation came from the person representing that neighborhood. The fourth bullet is actually something we've kicked around internally, and that's requiring a curb around the landscaped area, so a raised concrete area so that the cars can never enter that landscape area. And while it's a good idea, it does add to the expense, and so that's something worth But that's one of the recommendations. One of the task force members thought that the existing driveway should be in good repair. And that was, you know, those, I think the person might have supported keeping option one, but with a caveat that if the, this existing driveway was crumbling, that maybe the city would, you know, require that be replaced. There wasn't any sort of polling of these opinions, but they were just setting them forth for your review. This is the same slide we had at the beginning of the presentation, just so that we can remind the council what still needs to be decided. But before we move to that, just a couple of reminders, if you will, and it's, this is included in the staff report, members of the Westlake neighborhood do remain concerned about the use of single-family homes and the rooms within them in a way that each room is being rented to individual people. This isn't... This is a topic that was not covered by the task force meeting. The city staff is recommending that the city council give further direction for potentially another task force to explore that topic in particular. That topic has all sorts of discussion topics itself, and, you know, really does warrant its own, its own task force. So we are recommending that. We think that we could put something together on that task force that is in the month of March. So that's of note. Also, any of the recommendations that the task force members gave can also be incorporated into our policy material and brought back later as codification. So we did land back on this slide just to remind us all what the outstanding issues are. Requirement for a permit, the trigger for remodeling compliance, and the policy related to the design which the task force has spoken on. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you go back about 13 slides?
Yeah. Tell me when to stop.
I'm sorry. Okay, it might have been seven. Forward. I'm looking for the piece that looks like you had a raised sidewalk. Keep going. Right there. Now, that really doesn't look like a triangle, but that would be okay.
Oh, that would be okay.
Wow, that's, that's pretty good. That's really thinking outside the box. I like it. Well, first of all, I'd like to say, great presentation. I remember when we first put this task force together, that it was hard because there was other problems that may contribute, but the actual issue was dealing with the paving. And I'm glad that you and staff got the community folks to stay focused on that one area, because we do need a task force for the other issue. But I would like to say, outstanding. And I had a question on the triggering. I'm glad that it was raised to 100,000. My question is if someone wants to perform $100,000 worth of remodeling, but that does not include their driveway. I think we had someone in Westlake who, they're satisfied with the way their driveway is now. They have no intention of putting in extra cars there, but if they remodel and say want to build a $100,000 addition, are we going to force them to redo their driveway?
No.
When they don't even want to redo their driveway?
Well, no. If we decided to go with option one, their existing driveway would be retained.
Retained, okay.
And if they met the parking requirement, and there was no need to expand the driveway to meet the city's parking requirement.
Oh, okay. All right, now, that's the question I have. Correct me if I'm wrong, 1,500 square feet and above requires four parking spots?
It's up to 1,500 square feet requires two, up to 2,000 requires three, up to 2,500 requires four parking spaces.
Okay.
And over 2,500 requires six.
All right.
And those are in, in the building spots, right?
That's habitable square feet. The city council set a policy back in July that persons could complete minor additions to their homes exceeding those numbers, so long as it really created no additional, you know, number of bedrooms, things like this.
Well, the question I have, okay, so let's take the four parking spots. They have two now. It's just a couple, no kids, no one else, and they just want to add on addition, either make the kitchen bigger, or a big sunroom in the back, and it's gonna cost over 100,000. They will probably be increasing the square footage, but are we going to require them to have four parking spots rather than the two that they already have?
If it was an expansion of a kitchen, we probably would, that probably would not trigger additional, the need for additional parking. The sunroom might. The only, the $100,000 valuation only applies to situations where there is an existing off-driveway concrete pour.
The $100,000 threshold is a trigger by which a homeowner would need to correct paving that had been done without permit and that did not record their property through the amnesty program.
Within the amnesty period, that's right.
So, for example, if my whole front yard was paved prior to the requirement of the permit, but I come in and I register my property and I show that it was done prior to the ordinance, even if I did a half a million dollar improvement to my home, I would not be required to fix the driveway?
Yes, that's correct. And currently, that date is set at July 1st, 2018, that our amnesty program would end. And it really, we may expand it beyond that depending on when we actually send out the flyers and put the notice in the utility bills.
Right, which is why it's very critical that we all, you know, take a part in getting the word out there, because getting people to provide, you know, pictures and submit the proof that they have a paved front yard is critical for them in the future.
I knew that, following upon what Councilmember Sylvester has said, some people in the community felt like they were going to be forced to do this. No, you have the driveway you have, whatever you've got now. If you want to be able to have off-driveway front yard parking in addition to your driveway, this program offers you the opportunity, not the requirement.
That's right. It's, this is.
And the amnesty, if you, if you get in and file your paperwork for the amnesty, then you're done forever. But if you don't do the amnesty program, and you want to make big changes later, then you're gonna have to comply with the law.
Ooh. So I think the public needs to know that, especially.
Oh, yeah. I'm assuming that will be right in the flyer.
Oh, that's outstanding. So folks can be grandfathered in.
Yes.
Wow.
We are going to distribute this in the, in the utility bill, and we'll set up a web page that explains it all.
Yes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, outstanding job.
Yo, tell me, pal.
I thought that this was gonna be a hard ask of you, of the staff, and to be able to get unanimous agreement on something, you know, that was pretty volatile, was just, I didn't have a whole lot of hope, and I'm just so glad. So perhaps this is a way that we need to do business. And I think it's a good idea to separate the issues, in that we're gonna have another one in March for a separate but similar issue, I guess, because it's sort of neat, it's sort of the same issue. So I guess I would make the motion to.
I have some comments to make.
Go ahead.
The drawings are some examples of what it might look like, but is not required to look like.
That's right. They're just illustrative.
So, on, because there are lots that are not 25 and not 33. There are double lots, which are 50. There are some lots that are like 47, especially in the really old part of town, they're just some weird shaped lots. Some are not even square, they're kind of triangular. So I'm assuming that there's flexibility in the, so if the driveway's like this, but there's a spot that's also like this, that that would be, because you can get through it, there wouldn't be an additional curb cut, that that also would be legal if you can get to it without driving over meters or anything like that, that angled here, angled there. It's not really for those specialty situations, which there are a few in almost every neighborhood.
People would be allowed to pave that area and park on it.
Right, and park.
So long as they're not encroaching on the city sidewalk, not trespassing.
And not driving over a sensitive meter.
Not driving over a curb. If you're outside of the amnesty period, we will require that the utility box, if it's, although in the older parts of town, I think most of them are already metal or concrete.
Yeah, they are.
Because we don't want our utility meter boxes crushed. That's something that we're gonna be very sensitive to.
And just a comment about the amnesty period. It would be great if the amnesty period would, was originally gonna be six months. Is from whenever we get the massive program out, and in the daily, what is it, the Daily News that goes out? We could put the application, and the Daily Wire, and the Next Door, and the water bill, and all that stuff, that it be six months from whatever time that is.
Yes, it will be.
And I know I said it before, but if there's some way that people could photograph their driveway on their cellphone, they could fill out a type-in-able form and send that in to you, that would probably be a whole lot easier for you than a lot of paper and a lot of people trying to print photographs, and so that would be great.
Yes, we will make it very simple and easy, and it will be six months at least.
Yeah, great. And I want to know who that is. They were really creative. I have a 25-foot lot, and I happen to have a two-car driveway, but I have lots of planting. I mean, just, there's bushes and flowers, and so you can get pretty creative with space if you want to do plants.
And to address your question about the flexibility, yes, the flexibility exists. We do work on a lot-by-lot basis to try and achieve what the homeowner wants while maintaining a neighborhood aesthetic.
Yeah.
The regulations do say, you know, at least 25% landscaping, and sometimes if it's necessary, it may be a little more than that. But we want to be able to provide them that parking space and make sure that the neighborhood character is retained. So that's.
Yeah, and that varies neighborhood to neighborhood.
Yes.
Mine would just be happy to get the cars off, off the sidewalk and get them off blocks.
Right, right.
Put them back on wheels.
Right. In your neighborhood, the 25% rule doesn't.
Yeah.
Qualify in that neighborhood. Thank you very much for the presentation and really the effort in working with the residents and the homeowners to get to this place. I do echo that it is a huge feat and wonderful to have it come back and really garner the feedback from individuals and homeowners, and really the community. So thank you for that. As far as making sure it's easy, is there any way, and this is just an idea, to introduce it also on iHelp, since there's already a function of taking a photo, and then it, then it goes to the city? So I don't know if that's kind of, it's a platform that's already existing, therefore it gets to the city. I don't know if there's any way we can work with our iHelp app.
Are you talking about requesting to do this work, or?
No, I, I.
No, just the recording, the, to save it.
Oh, to record the information, yeah.
Like, so that it's easier.
I got you.
We're talking about having, you know, residents have an easier time. We already have the iHelp application for those of you in the audience or, you know, watching. It's basically an application on your phone that already has the opportunity where you can take a photo if there's any garbage or whatnot in the area. But for this instance, we would utilize it to take a photo of your front yard. So I'm just thinking if there's, we have something existing in infrastructure, maybe we could utilize that.
Yeah, it's certainly something worth exploring, because it, because this wasn't something that ever did require a permit before for the front yard portion. There's not a lot we need beyond address and a photograph, just as some sort of photo proof. So we could certainly explore that.
Thank you.
Maybe some sort of FAQs, frequently asked questions. How do I go about it? Tell me about street paving, and, good idea.
Thank you very much.
Can we go back to the slide that has the decisions that we have to make tonight?
Oh, okay.
Either at the beginning or the end? Whoop, there we go.
So I start out, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the task force recommendation to, to option one with the 165 permit and the valuation of 100,000.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, wait. Go ahead.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, okay, so what about number four? Do you, we want to do it all at once?
Yeah, that's what.
Is that, that's option number one? Okay. All right, so basically, items two, three, and four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Christensen?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Okay.
Great job, Mr. Longhaw.
Thank you so much.
Please extend our gratitude to the.
We wanted this in 2003.
Oh, yeah. The task force members, they were truly outstanding, and perhaps we can keep them on the same list.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Thank you very much. So we're moving on to public appearances and oral communications. Do we have any speakers? Seeing none, we are moving on to appointments for board and commission memberships. Do we have any? None this evening. Reports, agenda item number eight on council committees. Do we have any reports for council committees, please? All right, seeing none, we're moving on to city council reports. Any reports from my colleagues?
Nope.
I just have a, a couple of comments, if that's okay. I think we all received a letter requesting that we name the Dozier Senior Center Library, the Eleanor Charleston Library. She, they're, they're having a celebration, actually on her 102nd birthday, which she didn't quite make, but almost. So I'd definitely like to see that on an agenda soon. And I'm assuming that the celebration, the actual official painting of the window and stuff would happen at that May celebration.
Thank you for that. I did receive the letter and the same sentiment, and I think that's something that we would definitely love to honor such a wonderful community member. And so we'll definitely have that on the agenda and what, in her tribute.
Right.
Also, I just wanted to let the public know, I did attend the new mayor's and city council, what do you call it, training and academy in Sacramento. And so with that, I was able to, with other new mayors and other council members there, learn about different topics, such as, you know, effective advocacy and key issues, and also the policy role in land use, communications in new media, our financial responsibilities and city revenues. So it was really a great way to learn from, you know, experts in the field, as well as, you know, meet other colleagues around the state. And it was very beneficial, and there are already some items that I would like to bring forth so that our city can utilize what I learned during training. Also, I'd like to invite people in the audience and in the public that, or on TV, that the State of the City will be here at the Daly City Rotunda this Friday, January 26, from 11:30 to 1:30 PM. Please join myself and Mayor Ray Gonzalez in the State of the Cities for both Daly City and Koma. At this time, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Luke W. Hurd, our street maintenance worker, Lonnie Hurd's father. And let's have a moment of silence, please.